There's a debate tonight, the pilot extension request.
Yes.
Which I won't get to abstain of.
I figured you would.
Yes. Can I make any longer comment next time? Or should I abstain? Or should I pull it if I want to say abstaining?
We've been through all of that. So if you go to abstain, you should come.
Okay. So I can't for leaving.
Do I have to?
I guess I can abstain.
Yes.
Okay, you'll be there.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
We do that.
Yeah.
My mom. My mom. My mom. My mom. Hi. I'm taking. I always have cats.
So are you coming up here in the video? You're seeing her? Okay. So what's next for you?
So Michigan State, Madison, Dwyer, Dwyer.
Yeah, architecture and everything.
Okay. Target?
Nope.
She's gonna be your focus this time?
Biology.
I probably go on.
Yes.
Right, that's what we're here for.
It's the little houses that families and they turn a lot of the time with each other.
Are you?
And like the stuff I do is where they have everything. They thrive in every day. Also, they help with part of this whole. Yeah.
He's a motion. So they got it. It could be.
Taylor Brown.
Well, they're normally outside.
Hi.
Yeah, they're family.
Anyway, so she was spending one's time.
Oh, mom, it's through my school. Basically, we just get a bunch of.
Has she been there? How did you? How did you share?
Um, actually, it was.
I.
She was there this summer too.
Like sometimes I go, I just play with. Many kids, they all need to be watched. But then, yeah, when I.
So he was a fall.
Thank you for bringing.
So.
Not many, not many. A lot of green lights.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission to order for Monday, January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Knott?
Here.
Commissioner Millsarick?
Present.
Commissioner Sykes?
Here.
Commissioner Urban?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Present.
Mayor Hopewell?
Present on this Tuesday night. Thank you for that. Have to keep me focused, I guess. For our opening ceremony this evening, we will have an invocation by Pastor Strick Strickland of the Second Baptist Church. I ask that you stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Good evening Pastor.
Good evening. Well, with all of the things that are going on in our nation and around us, it's certainly wonderful to be in the city of Kalamazoo, starting off a beautiful year as we celebrate in unity and in harmony. And I want to encourage you and charge you, our commission, to have a wonderful year and to work together and keep the positive energy as we all lean to you for direction and leadership. Let us pray. Most gracious and eternal heavenly Father, we thank you for this night. We ask now, God, that you would just continue to go with us and stand by us. We ask now, God, that you would continue to lead us both internally and externally, that you would continue to put your hedges around us of protection, and God, that you would guide our minds and our thoughts. God, I thank you tonight. I thank you for every person under the sound of my voice, for what they represent, for the homes that they come from, and for the energy that they bring, the gifts and the talents that you have stirred together to make this beautiful city what it is. God, I pray now a special prayer, that you would divinely touch each leader under the sound of my voice. Give them what they need in order to hear from you and have our will to not be our focus, God, but have your will to be our focus. And then, God, we will give your name, the honor, the glory, and the praise. We pray this prayer in unity tonight. Let every heart say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioners and community, we have a special event tonight. We're gonna be introducing some guests. I'm gonna step down to the podium down below and we'll get started. And she's actually Clerk Moss, not Clerk Boiling. See, I'm really messing things up this evening. How are you, everybody?
Hello.
Good.
Good. You know, this weekend, we had a great weekend culminating the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. And, you know, this is a very special time in our community. I think overall, it's a very special weekend, especially with the events that will take place this year in the transition to a new president and what that transition and that new presidency might bring, not to be political at all. But we've had some great partnerships over the years, celebrating our young people during this weekend. And it gives me nothing but pleasure to be able to present four of these young people to you tonight, thanks to the good folks at Fifth Third Bank, Life EMS, and Shupan and Sons. So I'd like to welcome Judy Rosie, the Assistant to the CEO of Shupan and Sons, to get us started tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. The recipient of this year's Shupan and Sons Youth Social Justice Award is Dana Shaw. While reading through Dana's nomination package, one thing was very clear. Dana sees the needs in her community and takes action. She's often found donating her time at Rotary, Peace House, the Portage Community Center, and at Curious Kids. Dana has helped local refugee families by collecting food and household items, and she also volunteers as an English second language tutor for families at the Kalamazoo Islamic Center. Nominated by Janet Lavasser from Portage Central High School. Excuse me. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Shupan and Sons Social Justice Youth Award to Dana Shaw.
Thank you.
We have one more presentation. It's my understanding that the NAACP is gonna be presenting each young person with a year of leadership to the NAACP, so. Congratulations. Keep up the great work.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Judy, thank you and Shupans for continuing to support this program, this opportunity to recognize our young people. You've been doing it for years and years and years, and not that you'd ever be that old, but certainly years and years and years of recognizing this wonderful work and service of our young people, so thank you. You know, this always given me a pleasure because I hired this guy to work at Life EMS, and now he's running the place. And so I'm just really good or something, I don't know. Well, it gives me nothing but pleasure to introduce to all of you the Director of the South Operations of Life EMS, John Pieser.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have appreciated that ever since. Tonight, Isaac Moss is the recipient of the Life EMS Social Justice Youth Award. Isaac is a volunteering machine. Last year, on top of his commitment to school, extracurricular activities, and the Jeter's Leaders Program, Isaac managed to put in over seventy hours of additional volunteer time. He served on the planning committee for the Youth Summit on Racism. When the committee peers identified that a discussion centering on police brutality needed to happen between the area youth and the local law enforcement, Isaac took it upon himself to contact KDPS and orchestrate a session for the summit. Isaac embraces diversity in every aspect of the word and constantly seeks to educate himself on the perspectives of others. Nominated by Jennifer Haymoss, the Program Director of Turn Two Foundation, Jeter's Leaders, I am pleased to present this year's Life EMS Social Justice Youth Award to Isaac Moss.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce Ron For. He is the local President of Fifth Third Bank.
Our local mayor did not have the honor of hiring me, although I'm sure he would have had he could have.
We have a few openings.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the honor this evening of honoring Taylor Brown. And Taylor is this year's winner of the Fifth Third Bank Social Justice Youth Award. Taylor is a leader. Whether it's working on a Peace Jam project or a collaborative group project at school, she wants to help the others around her to be the best that they can be while making sure the project is done in a meaningful, organized, and worthwhile way. She listens attentively to those she is working with to ensure that all voices are accounted for. Taylor leads by example, choosing to spend her extra time in Peace Jam with the Senior Class Executive Committee, with Link Crew, Dream Center, Green School President, and Celebrate the Vision Homeless Meals. Oh, and of course, she is also a member of the National Honor Society. Nominated by Saveri Stamstromay from Roy Norx High School, I am very proud to present this year's Fifth Third Bank Social Justice Youth Award to Taylor Brown. Can I say a few words?
Thank you.
Geez, Ron's kinda, kinda tall there. And it is another honor of mine. We all know this gentleman, this amazing activist and leader in our community, someone that we love so much because of all he's done for probably almost all of us sitting on this stage. And he has a special award tonight, and so I want to present to you Dr. Lewis Walker.
He is embarrassing. Before we honor our honoree, I would just like to say that yesterday was Dr. King's Day, and we honored this great man. And as I thought about this great man, I'm just proud to say that I had the honor of marching with Dr. King on the last major march through Mississippi. It was a march against fear. He is my hero, and I'm delighted that our city is able to honor him in such a splendid manner. The young woman I'm allowed to introduce is also a splendid person, and this is Laura Hill, who has a deep passion for her community and a tremendous drive to make it better. She has spent many tireless hours working in several youth initiatives through the Alpha Kappa Alpha Ascend Program, and also chiefly volunteers at the annual La Croix Park and Playground Cleanup. Art Hop for the Arts Council of Greater Kalamazoo Volunteer, and many other locations. She's the daughter of a man I just met and admire immensely, her father, Rob Hill, who instilled in her the value, service before self. Service before self, which makes me think about a pledge we made when I went into the fraternity, "Service of all, and we shall transcend all," as she is a transcending young woman. As a student at Portage Central High School, she has shared her experiences in and out of the classroom with students of all races, nationalities, and ethnic backgrounds. Nominated by Seeley Miles from the Kalamazoo NAACP, I'm happy to present this year's Dr. Lewis Walker Social Justice Youth Award to Miss Laurie Hill.
I guess I'll make a little speech here since no one else did. I just wanna say thank you to everyone who had a part in this, and thank you to Dr. Lewis Walker for this award. Thank you to my parents, and thank you for everyone encouraging me and all the nominees to do something positive in this community. Thank you.
We have all the nominees and the presenters.
So congratulations. Proposal. Accepted. When's the wedding?
Yes, you can come forward.
Awesome. Congratulations.
All right, one, and two, and three. There we go. You know, these pictures are shareable. Congratulations to all. Item C, the adoption of the formal agenda. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you this evening. Are there any changes? Hearing none, anyone in the audience having an item under the consent agenda that they'd like to comment on, that item needs to be moved to the regular agenda?
Um, we would like to have item, let me put my glasses on. Five, move to the regular agenda, please. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, City Manager or Communications, please.
Yeah, one item, Your Honor. Next week, Monday, the twenty-third, at six PM, we'll be having a work session here in the community room to discuss the Foundation for Excellence, and more specifically, the process we want to explore to allocate or invest the ten million dollars of aspirational investment and get going on that. So look forward to a good discussion next week. And I'll, later in the agenda, I'll be covering a little bit of that material to help prepare for next week's work session.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item E one, I'll now open a public hearing to receive comments on an ordinance to one, rezone forty-five parcels from Zone M one, Manufacturing Limited District, Zone M dash two, Manufacturing General District, and Zone C C B D, Commercial Central Business District, to Zone C M U, Commercial Mixed Use District, to, and amend the River Overlay District to add, how do you say that? Subree? Subarea? Oh, okay, we got it. Should be hyphenated, I think. Subarea nine, and three, add the new subarea nine of the River Overlay District to the parcels. If there's anyone wanting to speak at this public hearing, please step to the podium. You will have four minutes, give us your name and whether you live within the city. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to adopt the ordinance, is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Urban.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Millsarick. Clerk, is there a discussion? Commissioner Anderson?
Just a brief comment. I know that this is the result of a lot of work by city staff. I think that demonstrates some real foresight and some thoughtfulness. In addition, this is a process that did go to the Planning Commission, correct, a couple of times? And there were some negotiations that went on that came back with a modified form that reflects some community input. I appreciate all that work, and I'm happy to bail a vote for it tonight.
Commissioner Urban?
Thank you, Mayor Hopewell. I am in support of this zoning change, and I took some time out to tour the area, some of the back streets and some of the areas which I came close to trespassing to learn more about, just to see what was going on and the extent of what's involved. There's a huge section of that area that is right in the center of our downtown that has been neglected for years. In fact, there used to be trucks that belonged to long-defunct circuses lying on the property back there, and already it's been, it's being relandscaped, and I'm very excited about how this fits in with the River Reach Initiative that the city began many, many years ago to improve our downtown along the river. So this, an area that's involved in this district right now that's being redeveloped is the one on East Michigan where Trey Star is. So take a look at what's going, what's starting to happen in downtown. I'm gonna vote for it.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Clerk Moss, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Millsarick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, motion carried. Mr. Manager, the consent agenda, please.
We have five items and one item that will be held until February sixth, two thousand seventeen. First, we have approval of a two-year contract extension with Rathco Safety Supply Incorporated for the rental of temporary traffic control devices in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Next is the approval of a contract for engineering design services with Jones and Henry Engineers LTD for the, for the design of solids handling and de-watering improvements at the City of Kalamazoo Water Reclamation Plant in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Jones and Henry Engineers LTD is a pre-qualified engineering firm. Next is the adoption of a resolution granting a payment in lieu of taxes for the Lift Foundation doing business as New Horizon Village, parcel number zero six dash one one dash one six zero dash zero zero one pursuant to Section thirty-five dash four of the Kalamazoo City Code. Next is the approval of the reappointments of Mayor Bobby J. Hopewell and City Manager James Ritzma to the Kalamazoo County Consolidated Dispatch Authority Governing Board of Directors with Public Safety Chief Jeff Hadley and Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain as alternatives, and the reappointment of Deputy Public Safety Chief Carrie Ann Thomas to the Kalamazoo County Consolidated Dispatch Technical Advisory Committee, the Dispatch Center Group Leader John Hurst as an alternate. These reappointments will expire on December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen. Next is the approval of the minutes from the City Commission meetings on December twelve and December nineteen, two thousand and sixteen. And finally, the approval of the sale of twelve thirteen John Street to Alfredo and Linda Zuniga for one hundred and twenty dollars. This item is being held until February sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items one through four and item six and hold item seven until February sixth, two thousand and seventeen, and authorize the City Manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city, is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Knott, supported by Vice Mayor Cooney. Moved by Commissioner Knott, supported by Vice Mayor Cooney. Clerk Moss, please call the roll.
Commissioner Millsarick?
Yes, with an abstention on number 3.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, however, I am abstaining on F3 and the reason is I have a relationship with Lyft Foundation. I'm on the Lyft Foundation board. There's no financial relationship, but due to the fact that I am on the Lyft Foundation board that is requesting this pilot, I'm abstaining on F3.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion carried. Mr. Manager, the regular agenda, please.
We have a recommendation to the City Commission that the following reappointments to boards and commissions be approved. First, the reappointment of Donna Keller to the Board of Review for assessments for a term expiring on January 31, 2020. And next, the reappointment of Mika Phillips to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on January 1, 2020. This recommendation includes a request to waive City Commission Rule 12E regarding term limits.
Anyone wanting to address this item in the public, please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city.
Good evening. My name is Sadie Jackson and I live on Winchell in the City of Kalamazoo and I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Board of Directors, or Board of whatever, Advisory Board. We're asking you to waive your rule and appoint Mika Phillips for another term on Prab because we really need her. She's been an excellent chair for three years and she's added a lot of nice things that we now do, like we don't just meet down at the Parks Department, but we meet in different parts of the city so that people can come and go to our meetings. We now attend many of the events that are going on because we get a calendar every month. What else, Chris? She takes good notes and she's a very good leader. Besides that, and this is the more important reason, she bakes really good white cake, which most people don't, and her cheesecake is unbelievable, which she brings to meetings for us. So we're really, we really would like her to spend another three years with us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mika Phillips and I reside in the City of Kalamazoo. Thank you, Sadie. I appreciate that. I would just like to say that I have really enjoyed serving the last two terms on Prab and I really am compassionate about issues that have to do with our city parks and recreation for the children in our parks. I currently also am one of the 100 extraordinary women that are part of the Bronson Park 21st Century Campaign so that I think that speaks to my love and commitment and dedication for the City of Kalamazoo and its parks and I would ask that I am approved for another three-year term.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak on this item? Hearing no one. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve. There's no documents to sign, so is there a motion?
So, support.
Vice Mayor Cooney, supported by Commissioner Millsar. Discussion? Commissioner Anderson?
Is there any particular reason that there was no white cake here tonight?
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
I have one more. The mayor can attest to her cooking.
Clerk Moss, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Millsarick?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion approved. Congratulations. Mr. Man?
Next, we have adoption of a resolution approving and adopting the annual appropriation for the year 2017, setting forth a number of mills to be levied, approving interappropriation for the year 2018, and establishing policies for the administration of the budget. And also, the recommendation is the approval of the component unit budgets and fee schedules set forth below. They are approval of the proposed fiscal year 2017 Downtown Development Authority Budget as submitted by the DDA Board. Next is the approval of the proposed fiscal year 2017 Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Budget as submitted by the Bra Board. Next is the approval of the proposed 2017 Economic Development Corporation Budget as submitted by the EDC Board. And next is the adoption of a resolution setting the 2017 fees for various permits, hearings, et cetera, within the Community Planning and Development Department. Next is the adoption of a resolution setting the 2017 fees and charges for the Parks and Recreation Department. And finally, the approval of the 2017 proposed fee schedule for the Kalamazoo Municipal Golf Association. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight a couple of features of this budget and appreciate all the time that's gone into this by staff and putting this work together by our finance department. Much good, hard work involved in that. I really want to highlight the reduction of our millage. This was a hallmark of the Foundation for Excellence. This will be the first year as we launch into this work and so we're excited to reduce our millage rate down to 12 mills. And as I mentioned earlier, the aspirational investment that will have the opportunity to really make an impact in this community for next year or for this year and the years beyond. And we'll talk at great length about that next week. Another feature is the addition of 60 new positions, 62 total, that will really help support the work going forward. And this, I know this is a big leap for this, for this organization, but it's a good one. I think we've, we've got work to do. There's no doubt about that. We're looking at putting systems in place that will help us processes, always looking internally to do things better, reinvent ourselves and continuous improvement, some of the hallmarks of high-performance organization. And we're going to continue doing that and having additional resources to help move that work along is going to be critical for us as we, as we build ourselves up for success. And that's what it's all about is when we're successful, it means the community is successful and that's, that's really what, what this work is. So I'm excited to launch into this this year and appreciate the support. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the manager questions, not statements? Anyone in the audience wanting to address this item, please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city. Seeing no one, Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to adopt the annual appropriation resolution and approve the component unit budgets and fee schedules. Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Knott, supported by Commissioner Urban. We're in discussion. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I always want to remind anybody who's watching this occur tonight is that this is the end of what has been basically a, even though it lasts all year, but an official seven-week process in that the budget was provided to the Commissioners at the beginning of December as required by the charter. That that budget has been available on, via our website for anyone in the City of Kalamazoo to study on their own. There was a work session, a special work session on the budget which was open to the public. In addition, there was a hearing on the budget which we had as well, which was obviously, it's a public hearing, it was open. So this is the end of that process. In addition, there'll probably, probably, but I know that there will be some amendments that will come to us, which is a little unusual in that we have this new resource that we are going to be basically adding to our budget work that has occurred so far. We know that's happening also, so there's more discussion about our budget. So that all said, there are, all of us here in the City of Kalamazoo have experienced this fact and some of us who have been up here have experienced it even more. And that is that some years ago, we had to undertake what was a serious, serious reduction in staff and as a consequence, services in the city. And we accomplished that through a program that was called the ERI. It was a program that was challenging at best, but it was very, very painful and that longtime employees left. We, we lost a lot of competent folks here in order just to cut our costs at the city, but there was definitely a reduction in services that could be provided. And I think that now we're beginning to build our way back out of that. I think that the words that are being used in our planning process, which actually may be still occurring tonight, the Imagine Kalamazoo Process, I think tonight was in the Vine Neighborhood. Imagine is allowing us to think together about what Kalamazoo can be, how Kalamazoo can be a greater place than it is now. So I want to thank the City Manager and staff for all their fantastic work. Look forward to great 2017.
Other comments, Commissioners? Vice Mayor Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend the City Manager and the staff for the wisdom, the creativity and the hard work that went into this very innovative budget. And I believe that it will certainly result in a higher quality of life for our people and make a real difference to our people and the community. So thanks for all this really fine work. Appreciate it.
Other comments? Clerk Moss, please call the roll.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Millsarick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion carried. I do want to say one thing and we, we get tagged a lot in regards to what we do and how we do it and resources and what road gets fixed first and how many public safety officers. That work is the budget. Truly, that's how we set priorities, as many families do, as many other organizations do. It's probably, well, not probably, it is the most important responsibility for us as a city commission. And I think that if you are wondering what our city priorities are or if there's others out there that believe that we're not hitting our city priorities, the priorities are in the budget. So as I often say, don't believe everything you read and see until you do the work yourself. This is our budget. This is our responsibility, the most important responsibility, and this is how we address our priorities that are set out for this city. So if you want to know what the priorities are, want to know what that work is, feel free to dive into the budget. Mr. Manager, you have a report this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. First, I'd like to invite forward Director Baker to give a presentation on the Vine Street construction project. This is a follow-up from our last meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Director.
Good evening. Good evening, Your Honor. Commissioner, City Manager. Just want to take a moment to again go over the Vine Street project, Davis to Oak, go over some of the timeline of the project and then touch on some key constraints that we faced in the project and then also kind of talk through our ongoing schedule with the completion of design and then ultimate construction. So this project dates back to approximately 2012. Curb extensions were planned by our engineering staff at the time. These were seen as improvements to crossings along the Elsol Elementary School Route. In 2013, staff then applied for TAP funding through CATS and MDOT for safety improvements. Funding was approved for 2017 based upon, at that time, focused improvements to enhance pedestrian and non-motorized traffic. In 2013, city engineering staff looked into potential solutions in response to parking complaints. Currently, there is no legal parking along the north side of Vine from Davis to Oak. There is a long-time business in that location that would certainly benefit from having parking in that area. In 2013, again, traffic engineering staff met with the business owner and director of the Vine Neighborhood Association. They come, put together a conceptual plan to widen the street to allow parking and then continue to allow the safety improvements for pedestrian and non-motorized traffic. In 2013, that solution was presented with a coordinated TAP funding update and was approved through MDOT for 2017. So from the project, kind of conception through initial design spanned a little over a two-year period, at which time the engineering staff had an initial solution that they were trying to solve. They met with members from the community and then they altered their design at that point to further accommodate the needs of the neighborhood. Fast forward to 2016, the project was then on the docket for '17. Staff recognized the need for additional public engagement prior to bidding the project. So at that point, they consulted with the Executive Board of the Vine Neighborhood Association. They sought input from the Elsol Elementary School again. Those interactions resulted in a public meeting on November 3, 2016. During the presentation at the public meeting, certainly there were some members from the neighborhood that were concerned with the tree removals. There were residents concerned with the ability for buses to make the movements and concern for the overall look of the project. City engineering staff met with those folks from the neighborhood and continued to do further design work to ensure that the buses could make the turns, to ensure that the safety improvements were taken into consideration best management practice of engineering professionals today and as well as further explained the need for the tree removals to accommodate the proposed legal parking. In December, on December 6, 2016, the required tree removals were taken into consideration by the Tree Board. The Tree Board required at that time that the removals be replaced on a one-to-one basis. On December 8, 2016, all trees requiring removal were marked with an X and a note was placed on the door of the adjoining property. There was a note attached to that card that indicated the property owner could call Public Services to discuss tree replacement. On January 2, tree removal operations were begun by city forestry crews and those tree removals were completed on January 12. At this time, the project is scheduled for our June MDOT letting. We anticipate award of the project to a contractor in July and we anticipate scheduled completion in November of 2017. In coordination with the service improvements that we discussed, there will also be some utility improvements replacing lead services and there will be water main and sewer replacement on Locust Court. That's within the project scope of this project. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Sykes?
Sorry. Just a couple. So the public meeting, November 3, you said? How did we promote that?
I believe we promoted it through the Neighborhood Association. I can get back to you on our exact methods that we used to do that.
Okay. Awesome. And then do we have an estimate of how many people were in attendance? And then also, how many of those folks had concerns that we then followed up on?
The, I'm looking through the meeting minutes here. I don't know if we've got a roll call as far as how many were there. We did take note of the concerns at that time and we did walk, you know, talk through those concerns with the individual residents.
Okay. Can you ballpark it? Like, I mean, I know it wasn't right, but like 100, you know, 5, 30?
It would be difficult for me to say. I wasn't personally in attendance.
Okay. Can I follow up maybe in?
Yep.
Vice Mayor?
Just wondered, you say you put a note on every door where?
Thank you. A note on every door where you were going to take down a tree and told them they could call. Did you get many calls?
We received one call.
One call?
From the action of the notifications that were placed on the door. And at the neighborhood meeting, we did have one individual come out and contact us to say what kind of species they would like to see go back. So in total, two contacts.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to just give a presentation, a brief presentation, on the outputs of what we're hoping to accomplish next week at our work session. So first and foremost, I think it's important, and I'm going to, there's a brief handout here that you have before you. I want to first walk through the, we call it the Wheel of Fortune here, but it's really meant to show how all of our initiatives that we have going on fit together. And so if you follow on the outside, you've got the Foundation for Excellence on the upper left side, Priority-Based Budgeting and High-Performing Organization below. And in the middle, you've got Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. So those really are the four initiatives we have going on that are in various stages of implementation. So if you start in the middle of Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, that is going to be feeding into community goals and programs and projects. So out of that are going to come the ideas and the wants, the needs of the community as imagined through that process. Then what we're going to do, you start going clockwise, you will be working on resource allocation. And so this is where we're in the priority-based budgeting realm of actually taking the resources that we have available and allocating them based on the community goals, programs, and projects through a rigid scoring project, program, and ultimately bringing that forward for commission approval. So the work that we're going to be asking the commission to do in preparation for next week is going to be around program prioritization, and I'll get into that a little bit in a little bit. So then you proceed down, and this enters into the realm of the Foundation for Excellence, the buckets, if you will, that we have the 70 million over the next three years in. So the inner circle, aspirational investments, property tax replacement dollars, and then budget stabilization dollars. And as you track forward, those feed into city services, what we do as an organization, the core services we provide, and then the aspirational component, and how those resources fit into, or will flow into those areas and move our work forward. Then you come back around, and this is a new area we're going to be working on, is a community scorecard. And so there's elements of priority-based budgeting that are, that will feed into this nicely. Basic program attributes will help us score our, what we're doing against the community goals, and using result definitions of what success looks like in each of these areas. That's going to help us define how we're doing, how the work we're doing is impacting the goal areas. And then performance indicators. We're going to, this is going to be a data-driven scorecard that then feeds back into the community goals and ultimately becomes the basis for the next year's budget. And this is an iterative cycle. So hopefully, this kind of gives you a sense of how everything is fitting together in a, in a, in a nice way of moving us, all this work forward. And then I didn't mention the High Performance Organization below. That's internally working on, as I mentioned earlier, what it is, how we're set up internally, how our structures and processes are moving the work forward efficiently and effectively, and how we recreate and retain talent internally, and then move our organization forward through those areas. The next several slides are going to be the goal areas or result definitions. So for each, there'll be eight areas. Five of, or six of these are results that we had from last year when we first developed the budget. The first two are the new results based on the Foundation for Excellence, shared prosperity and youth development. So for shared prosperity, I'm not going to read all of these, but it's meant to, as you go around the bubbles around the center, each of those are an area or a definition of what success looks like in shared prosperity. For instance, in education, returning, reentry, family, community partnerships, you know, all the way around. So what the idea is, as we measure our programs and projects around these areas, the more that a particular program or project addresses more bubbles around this center circle, the higher value that program will have in this result area. So that's, that's kind of how this all works together. Then we got youth development is the other additional result area, and you've got the bubbles around there. And then strong community, economic success, transportation and mobility, environmental responsibility, recreation, educational and cultural opportunities, and safe community. And these are in no particular order, they're just, but each of these are areas that we've identified through, through our process we undertook last year with the public of what we value in, as a community, and the work that we need to do to, to make this community a great one. So the work that I'm going to task the commission to do for next week is found on the second to last page and the last page. So you recall from last year, we did have an exercise in, for the community to set forth a priority of each of the result areas, the budget exercise. So what we're going to do is suggest that you have $1,000 to spend in each of, across each of the result areas, and there's eight of them. So economically, I just went through them all. You've got them there before you. So simply, we want you to take that $1,000 and allocate them across the eight areas and submit those back to us before next week. So by the end of this week would be good, so we can compile them and bring that information to the next meeting, to the work session next Monday night, and it gives us something to start talking about and in having that input versus you doing it next week cold at the meeting. This gives you time to think about it, maybe get some input from, from your constituents or whoever you go to for, for input. And so, so then we can, we can use that as a basis for our work next week. So that's-
And just to be clear, for someone that just walked into their living room and has a television on, we don't have a thousand real, this is an exercise.
fictitious exercise.
I know I'm going to get called, oh, you all got a thousand dollars now. It's an exercise.
It's an exercise. Thank you, Your Honor, for pointing that out. This is done on, will be done on SurveyMonkey, so there will be an online link for you to go input that information online. Unfortunately, given the timeframe, we didn't have an ability to put a total box on there, so you're going to have to do the math on your own, and hopefully it will add to 1,000. So, so really, that's, we look forward to next week, and hopefully we'll, we'll have a good discussion. So this, again, these, this information that you'll be presenting back to us will be used to prioritize developing some weighting for, for those result areas, so we can start differentiating as we score programs and projects.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Urban?
Yes, Your Honor. So this hypothetical $1,000 is to be invested in what, or provide guidance for how to prioritize the aspirational investments? Or is it prioritizing the whole, the whole city budget?
This will be used for the tool to prioritize the aspirational projects.
Okay, good, thank you.
This is not the only tool, this is just a-
This is a part of, yeah.
Exercise.
This is way too simple. But we have to start somewhere.
And we'll present the entire tool next week.
Okay.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes, when will the survey link be available to us?
Tomorrow morning. And again, by the end of Friday, that'd be great, then we can compile it. And I think the attorney will, will want this, and so what we'll do is we will present the information back by Commissioner, by name, the priorities, just for transparency purposes.
Good.
Other questions? Hearing on, Mr. Attorney, you have a report this evening?
Good evening.
Madam Clerk, do you have a report this evening?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We are now at Citizens' Commons. Any citizen wanting to comment on anything this evening, step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I have two names. One name that my friends mostly call me is Nehemiah Skuddin, and my legal name that some insist upon calling me is Asia Kazad. I live at 1215 Oakland Drive, which is called Transitional Housing, and I like it there. And I wanted to speak concerning the Martin Luther King Convocation, I think it was called last night. And you know, I was there right from the beginning, and I stayed until near the end. And I was somewhat disappointed in that convocation. Martin Luther King was a great leader, he was inspirational to many, but he wasn't the only black leader, and we got that impression from the people who spoke. There was Malcolm X, who many times said part of why Martin Luther King made such great progress was because he had Malcolm X right behind him. And then was Shirley Duden, the leader of the Black Panthers, who was also assassinated in the problems associated with that era. And Maker Evans was assassinated in Mississippi while he was doing border registration and education. These four black leaders were great at working with one another to a certain extent, and they jointly tried to aid the American cause of black rights. Anyway, I was disappointed in the praise from Martin Luther King Jr. Nobody else got mentioned hardly. That was mistaken, in my opinion. Secondly, in politics, as I understand it, you get your own group together, like black people, hopefully, and then you look for allies, people with some things in common, maybe a lack of freedom and other things. And there was no mention of any attempt to look for allies in the convocation last night. No, no mention of gay liberation, for instance, lesbian rights or liberation, antisemitism as a problem, anti-Catholicism. It's forgotten, perhaps, that was Hitler and his concentration camps. It wasn't just Jewish people that were killed. The first group to be victim was about 100,000 metal patients, which German doctors cooperated with Hitler to sign them up and send them off to the gas chamber. Also, quite a few gypsies were killed, Polish people were killed, and numerous other ethnic groups that Hitler had a down on. It wasn't just Jewish people. We get the impression sometimes from Jewish propaganda that only Jewish people were killed in the gas chambers. That's simply not true. Hitler killed about 50 million people altogether. When you figure that 6 million of those were actually Jewish people in the gas chambers, it looks to still, the majority of Hitler's dictums were not Jewish, and we don't get that impression from what we hear from the Jewish people sometimes. Anyway, what I'm trying to say is that the situation is much more complex than the people presenting the convocation last night. There's other groups taking into account and looking for allies to assist the cause of freedom. You need to consider these other groups, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Vanenbosh. I'm a resident of South Haven. I'm here to talk about an issue that is of concern to both South Haven and Kalamazoo. We're very happy to hear that Entergy plans to shut down Palisades Nuclear Power Plant. Their plan is to shut it down in 2018. There's one approval in the way. They have to get approval of a change to their purchase power agreement, and that is going to happen at the Michigan Public Service Commission. The, unfortunately, the State House of Representatives passed a resolution in December stating, or urging, the MPFC to reject the power purchase agreement. And that would essentially delay the shutdown of Palisades. It's kind of unclear how that would work, if the state would pay for repair. But this position taken by the House of Reps is very damaging to the people that live in proximity to Palisades. Just over a week ago, Consumers Energy sent a letter, additional information, to the MPFC, and I'd like to read from that letter. "The cost of operation and the business risks associated with Palisades have turned out to be higher than originally anticipated in 2007 and are only expected to get higher." And in another section, it says, "For Palisades, Entergy has determined that a shutdown in 2018 is prudent when compared to the business risks of continued operation." And no one knows the risks of continued operation or the condition of the plant better than Entergy, better than the operator. If Entergy believes that it's prudent to shut down this plant in 2018, it's important that the plant be shut down. The concern is that there will be a state government mandate to continue operating the plant. I won't go into the reasons, but I'm here actually asking for help. I would hope that this board would consider supporting Consumers Energy in their request to the MPFC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, the mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Zachary Lastner. I live in the city of Kalamazoo. Got a couple of things. First off, happy birthday, Commissioner Sykes. Second off, I'd like to ask the city attorney if, under FOIA, that we can FOIA request white cake. I'd like to try some, too. Now, for something a little more serious, I think we can all agree that the budget passed tonight is one of the most important things this city commission you do every year. The budget impacts all aspects of our city. The budget process has become more and more difficult as of late due to financial constraints passed on by the economy, our state, and all of that. We've had to look for additional revenue sources and make difficult decisions cutting services and eliminating jobs. I wanted to raise a potential revenue source that is completely legal and doesn't take any changes except for the enforcement of existing law and policy. Churches in our community own significant amounts of property. Some of the property has significant taxable value. State law exempts houses of worship that are used for religious services and teaches, teachings, they're exempt from property. It does not exempt parking lots or abandoned buildings at all. There are churches in our community that own properties used as parking lots and abandoned buildings, such as the church at Porgeon Lake or even the big church across Ponce and Park. These churches sit empty, get graffitied, lawns are never mowed, and the sidewalks are never cleaned. It seems the churches is hold on to these tax, as tax-free investments. Legal assessment of these taxes would offer additional revenue to the city that is already owed to the city and might encourage use and upkeep of these abandoned church structures or their sale for potential development, which would encourage- or their sale for potential development, which would encourage, which is another one of our priorities in the city. I think there are churches that do great things in our community. However, with times getting more financially difficult, we as a city have to make some difficult decisions. And it's only fair that they pay their share as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Commissioners, good evening. Gunar Skai, 711 West Walnut. Like to speak about Vine Street. Before I do that, I would like to pass out some information, if I may.
And to the city clerk.
Last time I was here, it was November 8th or 9th, following a meeting at the Vine Association regarding the proposed work at Vine Street. At the Commissioners' meeting on November 8th, I expressed my reservations about the proposed work. The people present at the meeting, I believe that we were about eight people. Three people were from the city. They were the only people that were in favor of the project. When you look at these photographs before and after, you will clearly see that this is a destruction of an old historic neighborhood. Vine Street is one of the oldest streets in the city. It does not need any widening. What you have done, you have removed shade trees that are approximately 50, 60 feet tall. What you see on the pictures, for example, picture number seven of eight, it shows you the remaining trees on the south side of Vine Street. The same type of trees were on the north side, where you can see that they have been clearly removed. The effect is, it's a disaster. The neighborhood has many problems, and we are trying to overcome them by attracting people to move in and make it a pleasant neighborhood. This type of work simply destroys the ambience of the neighborhood. There is a restaurant on the corner of Locust and Vine. We have seen construction taking place. They are talking about a spring start and a fall finish. I would say that would be if they are very lucky. The restaurant will suffer economically because of the duration of the project. I do wish that you would reconsider this proj- this project because it really is to no one's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Hi there. I'm Jamie Kavanaugh. I live in the Vine neighborhood, in the city of Kalamazoo. I have my business, my livelihood, at the corner of Vine and Locust. The first notice I got of this property, or this project on Vine Street, was a later, letter dated October 11th inviting me to come to a meeting where questions would be answered and the plans would be laid out for this project. This was not a public meeting, nor is notifying the Neighborhood Association of these plans a public meeting. Property owners were never notified, never invited for input. As I said two weeks ago when I was here, I personally have invested a ton of money in this neighborhood. I've made huge differences in that part of the neighborhood by my investments and by my presence. I'm insulted by this, the lack of communication. I can't even get return phone calls from city staff. I called Friday, I believe it was in the morning, I must have used my landline because I don't have a record of that phone call, to the engineering department. I'd been in touch with Steve from the Neighborhood Association and gotten the traffic engineer's number, called saying, "I have specific questions about this project. Could you return my phone call?" "No." "I understand they're closed yesterday." All day today, my cellphone was near. It did not ring. This is typical of city staff. I've had extreme difficulty getting things, questions answered. One of the properties I own in the neighborhood is at 1218 South Park. It's at the corner of Forest. Right now, the lane, the west lane of Park Street is closed off going a block south due to water in the street. Water percolates up out of my driveway, out of my yard, over the sidewalk. There's a good two inches of water in the sidewalk down there. There's no barricades up there, sidewalk closed, dangerous. But this project is going ahead, and it's going to do nothing. We've had parking on both sides on the north side of the street as long as I've owned my property at 804 West Vine, 724, 728 Locust. It's been allowed from 6:00 PM and afterwards, every day and all day on Sunday. That's been that way since I bought that property. Yes, the street might be three feet too wide or too narrow to allow parking on both sides legally, but it works. And having parking on both sides for the last seven years without enforcement, since the little blue cars were confined to the downtown business district, we had, to my knowledge, no increase of accidents, no personal injury accidents, no issues whatsoever. And originally, it was like discussed this, the city said, "Well, you know, it's too narrow to allow our fire trucks down there." BS. The biggest truck we have is numbered out of Station 6. That truck, one night at 2:00 in the morning, managed to get into my tiny driveway to work on a fire that was at the house immediately to the west of me. We're just not being realistic. I need support from the city in order to stay in business. I need parking on the street. This project is probably going to be two months, three months. I won't have any access from Vine Street for a significant portion of that. How am I supposed to stay in business? Does the city really care about small business? The way I'm being treated in this particular situation, the answer is hell no. I don't know that I'm going to make it through this. Maybe I won't make it to 25 years, and I'm really worried about it, and I'm insulted.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Judd Easton. I live at 715 West Walnut Street in the Vine neighborhood. First off, I thank all of you for the time you have chosen to invest to make Kalamazoo a better place. I think for everybody in here, we appreciate your service. We've heard a lot of talk already tonight about the difficulties of the budget and the need for prioritization. And we understand that as residents. We hear about it, we read about it. And my neighbors and I have chosen to take an approach that is more of a, "Ask not what your city can do for you, ask what you can do for your city." We've invested time clearing leaves this year, when the city wasn't able to do that. We've invested significant amount of time manicuring and planting curb lawns, watering them, weeding them, mulching. And a neighbor of mine that was already up here tonight, he and I have planted over 10 trees in the last year. We take a lot of pride in our neighborhood, and we do all of that stuff outside in addition to the massive amounts of work we do inside of our homes restoring them. We really care about our neighborhood, and we're happy to help. When you think about prioritizing where the budget goes, I could point out at least 10 projects ahead of the one that's being worked on now, simply from a needs and wants. Locust Street, if I'm having somebody meet me at Jamie's place of business, I tell them, "Don't take Locust Street, come in from Vine." The reason is Locust Street is in such disrepair that they could damage their vehicle getting there. I walk down Locust Street, and I have to be incredibly careful about where I step. And oftentimes, I use my cellphone light so I don't trip and fall because the sidewalk is in such bad repair. That's a project I would have liked to have seen these dollars and resources go to, a project that matters and a project that is a need for our community. That's before we even look at the pictures that Gunar's brought up here. And I think of the hours we've spent in the neighborhood, and then the city invests our tax money to come in and do that, to help the parking situation? I mean, it was just something that didn't matter. So I think it was just a poor plan. And I live about 400 feet from where the work took place. I never heard a word about it. I didn't receive a letter. I wasn't invited to a meeting. I heard about it through word of mouth. I saw a letter that said that work would begin in the spring. So I was pretty surprised on January 3rd when the trees were gone. The leaves were piled up in front of many people's homes in the Vine neighborhood and other neighborhoods. But the city had the, the time and resources to jump on chopping down a bunch of trees. It just did not make any sense to me, especially if work is not supposed to begin until June. So I, I just look at it, I'm not an elected official, I don't work in the public sector. But in the private sector, if somebody were to manage the company's money and allocate towards projects like that, that maybe don't matter while there's glaring needs, there's going to be accountability with that. I would expect to be terminated or at least a demotion from that. So as the Commissioners, you have oversight over the city, please ask them, before they begin a project like this, to just think hard about what if they lived on that street or if they lived in that neighborhood before we begin the planning and the executing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to address the Commission this evening? Seeing no one, Mr. Commons, Commissioner Mazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to wish Commissioner Sykes happy birthday. Thank you for spending your birthday evening here with us all. Thank everyone who came out to speak tonight. And I'd like to, to take a few moments just to speak on the Vine Street issue and just sort of speak to the, the personal nature of, of our neighborhoods. You know, Kalamazoo has a certain type of magic to it. And it's a magic that you really can't experience unless you live here. You know, I, I came to the Vine neighborhood, actually, to, to work on rehabbing a house on Vine Street a little over eight years ago, and I fell in love with the neighborhood. There's a certain charm about many of our neighborhoods that, that's undeniable to those who live there. And it's something you just can't quantify. So, so I just want to really point that out to, to our staff and, and those involved in these decisions so they can really understand how personal things are that happen in our community to those people that live there. It's not just a tree, it's not just a business, it's not just a curb or a street. It's really a part of, of what our communities are and what some of our neighborhoods are. And, and when things get changed in, in a way that the people that live there don't feel involved, it feels very invasive and very personal, very personally attacked. And that's, that's just something I feel like I need to say so that people can really understand the response that residents bring here. Because ultimately, I mean, I know several people who live on this street, and they, they did not feel a part of this in any way. And that's something we, you know, up here and at the city, need to just sit with for a moment and understand so we can reflect on the future and how we do better in the future, which is obviously what everyone wants to do here. You know, I know one gentleman on Vine Street, presently unemployed, and he met with me and said, "I was, I was going back and forth on work and finding new work in Kalamazoo or looking elsewhere, and I woke up and looked out my windows and saw the, the trees coming down, and I said, 'I'm moving.'" And he did. He is moving. So that's just, that's how personal this is to folks. And yes, people are going to move, people are going to make life decisions. And obviously, no decision was based just on this. But just to really make folks who don't live in these neighborhoods understand these things matter at a, at a deeply personal level. And I just hope we can find a way, you know, as we work, which I know is our plan, to doing better in the future, to, to really keep that in mind. And also keep that in mind when, you know, you have folks that are, that are calling the city and they, and they have issues with this. Just to keep in mind how personal that is with them. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Urban?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I had a chance to meet with city staff regarding what the lessons learned from this, this project, and I wanted to report briefly on that. Part of this problem comes about from the length of time it takes for the planning and project identification through getting approvals together through the, our local metropolitan planning organization known as CATS, which is the outfit that distributes gas tax money for road repairs on streets that MDOT has an interest in. And, and West Vine is one of those streets. So a lot of this began many years ago. And at, when we, when I was apprised of what's all involved, it's, it's pretty hard to imagine how people could think that this is something that's going to affect them at the point of planning. Has to go on from, you know, way back in the beginning in order to even get done at all. But at that early stage, the neighborhood says, "Well, that's so far away. I'm not interested. I, I don't..." It would, people could, there are some people like, like, like Jamie who, who might show up if they knew about it, but many, many people will say, "That, I don't, I don't get the picture." So in that meeting, we discussed what can we do different going forward? And I got, I heard the staff make a commitment that they're going to review all of their notification policies on projects like this, not just for roads and, and sidewalks, but for sewers and other things, to be sure that we're doing the appropriate level of notification, the appropriate time of notification for various things. And of course, there's a whole panoply of, of things, some of which need widened, widened public involvement and some less. So it's a big project. And I heard and applauded the commitment to have that come back to us in a few months and be approved on a, on an interim basis because we're going to be continuing to learn and adjust on that because we really hope to do better in the future. Because I, for one, was, was fairly embarrassed when I, when I first learned about the pushback we were getting on this project. And it looks like right now, as it's going to go forward, we're going to have continuing unhappiness, at least until the, the trees go back, the replacement trees go back, which is going to be many years. Then I'd like to comment on something that's a little harder to deal with. What we have, it seems to me, is a conflict between the professional expertise that's required for doing these projects properly, without making a lot of mistakes, without having to do, make do-overs, without having to go over budget, and to stay in conformance with state and federal regulations and safety guidelines. All this requires a lot of training and expertise, for basically professionalism. But along with that professional expertise comes a professional mindset, which says, "I know better, and I don't need to consult you because I'm the expert. I have a safety obligation to fulfill." I have a safety obligation to fulfill. I have to conform to these regulations." And the engineering mindset takes over. I'm an engineer, so I've worked with people like that. And it's very, it seems very arrogant. So that's the thing that we're struggling with here. In a way, this problem is not, in general, is never going to go away completely. All we can do is try to mitigate it. And I'm telling, this evening, I'm giving you my assurances and I hope I won't be embarrassed later that we're going to do better. In fact, I have with me something that they gave me to help me stay up on these things, which is the 2045 CATS Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is where all these things begin. And in here, in the delineated, is the Vine Street redo. So there are places one can go to learn what's in the plan. This is for 2045. Everything that's being considered between now and then is mentioned in this plan. So there are things that people can do to get wind of what could happen. And the earlier you know about it, the easier it is to adjust. Three or four years ahead of time, very easy. Down to six months, down to three days, not too much. I'm going to make this available to all the commissioners. I'll put it in my file in our little office up there next to the city manager's office. And so it's going to be like a little library for all of us to look at and to see what's happening. And it really bears some quality time reading through it. There's a lot of information there that helps all of us understand better the complexity of these issues. I'm very sorry that this is turning out this way. If there was some magic way we could immediately redesign everything and do Locust Street instead, I'd consider it. But I'm really afraid that the horse has left the barn here, I'm sorry to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gunnar?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my colleagues, I'm still studying page seven out of eight that was distributed to us. And I got to tell you, this looks like a bad haircut. As I look at this picture, it's embarrassing. And, you know, full disclosure, I worked for the Vine Neighborhood Association twice in my twenty-year career. And going back to 2013, there are folks on the board and involved in Vine that were there when I first came to the association in 1996. And there are still folks today in 2017 that are a part of the association. Folks are long-termers and activists within the Vine neighborhood. And since we met two weeks ago, I've reached out to a number of residents and business owners. And nobody agreed to this project or felt that they were fully informed that it was a trigger-go date. Their understanding was it was a discussion to discuss proposed plans. Now regardless of the process, we need to make some improvements. But I think that it's telling that the dinosaurs that have been at Vine since I first started when I was 21 were opposed to this project. And, you know, in thinking about engagement, I think Commissioner Sykes, you asked this question of Director Baker. How many, or somebody asked this question, how many houses, after we marked the trees and there was a note on the house, how many folks reached out to city staff? And the answer was none. Well, if you know the neighborhood and you're looking again at page seven and you're looking from Davis down to Oak Street, you know that predominantly all those houses on the north side of the street are rentals. Those tenants aren't going to call to talk about the trees coming down. And the chances are that a note that was stuck to a tenant, predominantly a college student's door, didn't make its way to the property owner. So there was no real opportunity for a property owner to make a phone call to talk about whether or not they opposed the tree in their front lawn coming down. Again, I just, I agree with Commissioner Millsar and Urban that this project doesn't rank up there in terms of priorities. I understand that it's a pot of money, it's a special pot of money, that the process started four years ago. But when you talk to the folks that are invested in that neighborhood, you know, they're opposed to it. And I just, I agree with the gentleman that spoke a minute ago. You can walk through Vine or any of our urban neighborhoods and you're tripping on streets. We don't have sidewalks, we have crumbling curbs and infrastructure. I just don't understand why we targeted these two blocks in Vine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sykes.
Yeah, hello. So this is really concerning to me, I think mainly for the community engagement piece of this, right? So many of you know, probably every one of you knows that, you know, before I, even before I considered running for this seat, you know, that was an issue that I took up and met with city staff about and talked about. And so I feel like, I feel like we've talked about this before a number of times, right? You know, what methods we're using to properly engage folks, to get input, to answer questions, all those sorts of things, before we get to a point where we have something that, for instance, seems to me to be irreversible. So to even be having this conversation after the fact is frustrating. And so, you know, in terms of, you know, my colleague said, you know, moving forward, how do we do better? One thing that keeps coming to mind for me is, you know, I know Director Lamb, Community Planning and Development, has, you know, used a variety of different methods over time to try to better engage community folks. And I know that we've talked about departments working together on these sorts of things. So I think one concrete thing we can do to do better is maybe, you know, for Director Baker to sit down with Director Lamb and other folks as well to talk about, what did we do before? What needed to be improved there? What was the community input then? Because even then, you know, each time we've needed improvements, you know, what improvements needed to be undertaken and what can we do better in the future? And, you know, I remember having these conversations where we're talking about the lighting ordinance, right? And talking about, you know, how the process had so improved and what sorts of things folks wanted us to do better so that the next time that we have to engage and, you know, get community input, we can do better. It would have been, I think, you know, outstanding to have taken that process and then approved upon that this time around. Now hindsight is 20/20, obviously, right? It's easy to say that after the fact. So I don't imply that, you know, Director Baker, you should have thought of that beforehand or anybody should have, really, especially considering this process started, I think, long before I took the seat. So I don't imply that at all. But I do think that that could be, you know, that is a concrete step that we can take moving forward is to work together on that piece so that, you know, the next time we have these processes, we do better. And I still would like to see, you know, we've had a couple of folks come out here, you know, a number of times. I know, you know, they're talking with commissioners outside of these meetings. And so I still would love for folks to have some more face time with city staff to, you know, further express concerns, ask more questions, get more clarification so that hopefully folks can feel a little bit better about this, if that's possible. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Annis?
Thank you, Mayor. As it relates to the topic everyone's talking about tonight, I think one thing that would be helpful, because this is really a difficult, difficult funding and street repair and how things are prioritized, it's not a simple thing on the face of it, is my understanding that actually Vine Street is in a different category than Locust, for example. So that I could be wrong, but the money that is not in city general fund money that's being used on Vine Street would not be available, for example, to use on Locust Street. So there are various sources of money. Most of the miles of street in town are streets that we have to repair and take care of ourselves with our own general fund dollars. Some of them are streets that are primarily the responsibility, not of us, but of the Michigan Department of Transportation. And some streets fall in an area where they've been defined as certain kinds of traffic load, sort of streets and that kind of business. In addition, obviously, we have new interests and people that lobby for a variety of things and different kinds of focus requirements that come with the federal and state money that is available to us. And those things might be things like congestion mitigation, which is related to environmental sensitivities. Or it could be things like non-motorized transportation, which attempts to create safer spaces for other kinds of transportation rather than vehicles. So those kinds of things now get into the mix. And those are things that are in the mix that weren't there maybe five years ago or ten years ago. So taking all that and trying to demystify it a little bit might help. So maybe, I'm going to make a suggestion here. If we can do it in a simple way, that's digestible, we don't have to create a whole meeting for it. I think we could basically lay out, here's the categories, here's our general ones, here's the ones where money that comes through CATS might be available for. This is a competitive process. We all pay federal and state taxes. We want a fair amount of that money to be spent in our town, on our streets, to do the right thing with it. And how are we making sure that we're making a case for that and how are we choosing those projects? And then what, if any, input do we have, for example, on our MDOT road? So I think that would be edifying for all of us up here and the general public. If we could maybe take some time, I know we've got some work sessions or I'm not sure if it could be sufficiently covered in a fifteen-minute presentation with a regular meeting. But something along those lines, I think, would help because that certainly, it is the case, for example, I don't want to get deep into it tonight, but I do believe that the money that is coming through CATS could not be spent on Locust because of the designation that Vine Street happens to have. And it would be, maybe we could give ourselves a map. We know which ones are, you know, CATS eligible for funding and what are the various categories of funding that come through CATS. And then how we determine internally to get our fair share and get those things programmed, realizing that we can't decide, "Oh, my goodness sakes, we really want to fix this street up." This summer, we have to have these ideas, I mean, literally years and years approaching decades in advance sometimes. Because we have projects that are funded, that are in this particular document that goes through 2045, that are already prescribed through the choices that are being made today based on what seems to be today's best practice and how to best utilize these resources. So it isn't something that can change on a dime. You have to have a great deal of foresight. But that all said, to do our best job related to it, it would be, I think, helpful to have a little clarity on that information.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Sir, I think my colleagues have covered this very well. So I just add a couple of things to it because I'm sure that our staff wants to do the right thing. And they're very talented. And I think they believed that they were doing the right thing in this, but apparently they didn't have the consent of the community. And for me, the top priority before we get into any project is, do the people in that community want this to happen? And I think that's what we got to make sure that is. I don't know where we are now. I don't know if there's a way to modify this project or what we can do. But I think the first step would be to have a conversation with Mr. Kavanaugh. I think we got to make sure that we talk to him. And talk to the people as much as we can to see what we, where we can go from here. I don't know what we can do, if there's any way to modify this, but I think we ought to try and see what we can do here. I hate to see trees go down. For me, a tree going down's got to have a major reason. When I look at that picture, I wouldn't want to be in that neighborhood when those trees went down.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I'm going to start at a different place and then end somewhere else. Been doing this a long time. So let me, let me make sure that we have a little information about what we have as a challenge in regards to infrastructure. It's my understanding we have about seventy million dollars worth of infrastructure challenges. That's not just roads, that's what's under the roads. And so that's the big picture. And it is interesting, and we get to hear it, that someone says, "Why are you doing that road over another?" I get it. But there's a whole lot more that goes in there than my walking and seeing that a sidewalk needs to be repaired and what an engineer or staffer knows about what's under that sidewalk, what's under that road, where those funds are coming from. So I get it, we hear it, you know. My street was fixed, I don't know, fifteen years ago before I was on the commission. I thought, "Oh, I thought the street was pretty good. Why are they working on my street?" But I don't, I'm not going to sit here and tell you why, how I know which road should be done. That's, I'm not an engineer and I don't think that's what I or we are ever going to know. The other thing I'm going to say is, and not to be insensitive, having been on the Planning Commission zoning board and doing this work for a long time, and even just a couple of weeks ago, an organization, Facebook, had meetings, had information go out, knocked on doors and what have you. And there was still some lady that beat me up because she didn't know and so we didn't do a good job at getting it out. And I'm not saying that this is that case, but one thing I want to be careful of is that there will always be individuals that don't know something's going on. We just approved a hundred and fifty million dollar budget, the most important work of the city. And typically, this is, we get almost no comments. And that's an interesting thing when it's on the website, it's in the paper and what have you. I would love to be able to drag everybody kicking and screaming to every single meeting. So let me, I just wanted to say that because I think that sets, it's important. But now I want to go into project management for a second. So I've got requests. I appreciate, I don't know what we can do about this project, but I have requests. One is, I want us to develop a project management point that deals with community engagement. Now it may be there, but I want to understand what that is. What is it that when we take on a project that we are going to do A, B, C, and D to ensure curves? And then how do we react when we don't have the communication that we would expect? In a Vine neighborhood, to receive two comments, that would tell you, I mean, I'm not saying only two comments. That's not fair because I'm sure there's multiple perspectives of what comments are. But to receive two comments from door hangers, that might tell us that something's a little amiss. It would also be interesting to make sure that we understand what street we're on. So we get to see maps of multifamily units and duplexes and single-family, understanding that, okay, we only have ten single-family, so then we're putting doors on folks, things on doors that are renters. So I want to see how we're not going to do that and how we're going to really engage in our project management to ensure that we're taking those extra steps. And commissioners, again, reminding you of my last point, there will always be someone that walks in this room that did not know. And I think even folks in the audience that commented today, "No, you do not, you know you don't have" every person in the neighborhood that steps up and you'd hope, you've held meetings and ten people come, "Well, why only ten? We're an active native neighborhood. We should have thirty, forty, eighty." There's always going to be someone that did not know. So in that management plan, what are our checklists, that sort of thing? In regards to what I heard about the business, and this is something we heard during Farmer's Alley, what did we learn about supporting a business? And we weren't totally responsible for that project. So I need to make that disclaimer. It's Farmer's Alley, it was consumers and others. But how do we manage that challenge with a business owner? What are the steps that we're going to take? What can I say to someone when they ask me, "Well, this is what we're going to do if we're moving forward with a project"? I'd like to understand how that works and see our plan for dealing with that. I think there needs to be some follow-up meetings. I think that, and I've talked about this, and I understand, we know that we just approved the budget. We know that in 2012, we made some decisions to trim. And what we've never done real well, and I've said this over and over, we have not, we did not change the expectations or work with the community that when you have that fewer people, the expectation has to change. So, you know, the same people that do roads and leaves and snow and all of that stuff, they're the same folks. And there aren't as many people to do that anymore. And just to let you, just to say this also, $2.5 million or so of our dollars do not come back to this community that the state of Michigan hangs on to, that are your sales tax dollars that are supposed to come back in state shared revenue. And state shared revenue is not us dipping into the state's pocket. And state shared revenue is not us dipping into the state's pocket, that's our money that's supposed to come back to us, $2.5 million, I wanna say that. I also wanna remind you, we have 54% of the properties not on the tax rolls. That's why we're in this situation as well. And when you have 54% less, look in your wallet, what does that affect? What does that change for your life? What does that change for your ability to do the work that you need to get done? Needed to say that. But I think there's some follow-up meetings that need to occur regarding this as well. I'd like to know, especially since, I don't know what's gonna happen, how this can be adjusted or whatever, what are the next big projects that are going on? You know, we received some concerns about East Main Street. So what is our, what are our 27 or 18 big ones, and then as we develop that project management and that engagement strategy, implementing that? Trying to read my own handwriting here. So those are, those are the pieces. When this happens, we have to remediate, we need to do after-action reviews as part of that remediation process. We need to know what we went into, what were the assumptions going in, and what's our plan going in, and then when things don't go as well as you want, how do we reengage? How do we move forward? How are our departments working together, whether it's community planning, development, and public services? We have to take this as a learning, but we're also gonna have to support the community as we work through these projects, as we work through this project. So that's where I am on that, and, you know, I'll look forward to, I know you're gonna have all these things you wanna clarify with all of us and me, and I look forward to that conversation. I also want to take a moment, I've been missing a little bit from the community for work and other things, supporting our Broncos as they were playing football and elsewhere. One happy new year, happy birthday to Commissioner Sykes. We have a lot of work to do in 2017, and it's gonna be bumpy along the way. I think we're gonna have a whole bunch of interesting conversations on this diet as we continue to do this work, even as we look at the opportunities that this provides us. So I'm hoping Commissioners are having those conversations with staff, with the city manager and the city attorney, to really trying to get that perspective of what's to come. I hope staff is really diving in to what is going on this year and helping us navigate that and helping the community navigate it. I'm not saying you're not, I'm just putting it on the table that we probably need to turn up the volume, as I call it, on that work. Not easy, because now you're going to be hiring a whole bunch of people, and then we're gonna, well, you know, we got these hiring processes and whatever. I think the call today is a higher call, and we're gonna have to step up even with what we have differently. I really do believe that. And we've had some of these conversations. But I will tell you that, Commissioners, this is not the last time we're gonna have a conversation about a challenge, because there is not one perfect person that leads this organization or is doing this work. There's not. But we gotta find a way to keep this as a minimum, be prepared to do the work, diving in, working harder and engaging and moving us forward, and we are adjourned.